I want to welcome you to the four o'clock work session of the December 16th, 2014 Board of Commissioners meetings for the City of Bowling Green. We've got several items on our work session today. So, Mr. DeFebo, I think you're up first with the annual citizen survey.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. We here in the city think that we do a pretty good job providing services for our citizens. But you never know until you ask the people you serve, how well do we serve you? Every two years, the city participates in a survey with the ICMA organization to participate in asking the community in Bowling Green how well we do. We are part of a national effort by other communities to do the same thing, and we're able to compare our results to others. So, we find out how well our citizens think we're doing, then we compare our results. Kim Lancaster is here to present for you the results of this past year's survey. Kim?
Welcome, Ms. Lancaster.
Thank you, thank you. I know there is a lot on the work session, so I will be as brief as I can be with this, the 2014 citizen survey results. I'm just going to give a little bit of background on it. As Kevin said, it's the National Research Center in ICMA that we use to do these surveys. We focus on community characteristics, local government services, and issues of public trust. It's a standardized survey to ensure high quality of research methods, and we select households at random. And then, in addition to that, we also ask the adult with the most recent birthday to fill out the survey in order to get a sample without bias. We do multiple mailings each time we do the survey. What we do is we'll send out a postcard that'll go out from Mr. DeFebo, and then we'll follow that up with a letter as well. And then after that, the household will receive a survey. If they fill that survey out, that's great, and we're done at that point. If they don't, we do send out a follow-up survey in hopes to get a response from them. After that, we leave them alone. But we send out multiple mailings in order to encourage participation in the survey. The results are statistically weighted. The standard NCS form is reviewed by senior management staff as well as elected officials. We normally do two customized questions each year. I think we focused on the condition of specifically secondary and residential streets this year, as well as what kind of media people use to get their information from the city specifically, whether that be our website, or our Facebook page, or our blog, or things of that nature. And we also include services not provided by the city, whether that be library, utilities, transit, kind of just to get a better overall community view from folks. We mailed out 1,200 surveys this year. We received 112 back, and 112 that were undelivered, let me say. And then we received 237 that were filled out and returned, which gave us a 21 percent response rate. Twenty to 40 percent is pretty average, so we are on the lower end of that. It gives us a 6 percent margin of error. And so obviously, the more surveys we receive, the smaller the margin of error we have. And again, the data is statistically weighted to reflect community demographics. Just a few reasons on why we survey. For immediate benefits would be planning, resource allocation, performance measurements, and program and policy evaluation. Long-term, we're looking at improved services, civic engagement, community quality of life, and stronger public trust. Just a few things I want to mention before I get to the actual survey. When we're looking at the results, there's a couple of things that, you know, the NRC always tells me. There's certain things that are always going to be rated higher, or traditionally, anyway, I don't want to say always. Public safety services tend to get much higher ratings than maybe, say, transportation services. And when we're comparing, we always want to make sure that, you know, we don't want to compare our fire department to our roads. We want to compare our fire department to, you know, another like-city's fire department, obviously, to get a really good gauge of how we're doing. And in order for any kind of differences to be significant, we need to be looking at more than an 8 percent change from previous years. The benchmark that the NRC has, they have a database of about 500 jurisdictions that we use as a benchmark when comparing our data. We compare to both that 500 jurisdictions, as well as then we specifically segregate out the southern region with populations from 35,000 to about 70,000. So, we compare to both different ones to kind of get a gauge of people that are in our region and with like-sized populations, as well as nationally. I'm just going to do a couple of slides about kind of some of the overall results from the survey. As you can see, we've got results from 2010, '12, and '14 for the overall quality of life. Your neighborhood is a place to live, and Bowling Green is a place to live. These are the people that rated the quality of life as good or excellent. So, we had 84 percent for quality of life, 75 for your neighborhood as a place to live, and 90 percent as Bowling Green as a place to live. And you can see from the results there, we've actually climbed every year in all three of those categories. And then again, we've got just a couple more of kind of the overall ones, the likelihood of remaining in the community or recommending the community. And those have climbed again each year, 86 percent for remaining here, and 93 percent for recommending someone else to live here. I'm kind of just going to switch gears a little bit now. Instead of comparing from year to year for us, we'll take a look at how we compared in comparison to the other jurisdictions and the southern region in population. I'm not going to go through and read all of these, but you can see, you know, just a variety of quality of life things, where we range from 63 percent for Bowling Green as a place to retire, all the way up to 90 percent as a place to live. And then what we're going to look at is kind of how we compare. And you guys will see a trend here, but every single thing that was on the previous page is similar. It's similar to the national comparison, and it's similar to the southern region with the population. Last year, we had a fair amount more of either being above or below, but this year, we have a lot more that are just similar. Some of our services that are rated as excellent or good, our police department is at 76 percent fire at 93. We've got some lower ones there with street repair, street cleaning at 35 and 55 percent, and it goes on with snow removal, sidewalk maintenance. But again, when we take a look, everything except for street repairs specifically in the southern region with our-like population is similar to what we're seeing as a national average. We are below percentage-wise in the street repair category in the southern region. Some additional services, quite a few parks and recreations and code enforcement ones here. Our parks receive 79 percent rated as excellent or good. Our recreation centers and facilities at 65 percent. Code enforcement at 47 percent, animal control at 60, and then public information services at 68 percent. And like I said, you're seeing a trend here. Again, this year, it looks like we're kind of on par with everybody across the board. You know, some of the numbers may look low, but they're very similar. And that's not to say that we don't want to be above, but it's nice to know that we're trending, at least with the national average. Community characteristics, the overall appearance of Bowling Green, as you can see, 78 percent. Again, I won't go through and read all of these. I believe opportunities for employment at 49 percent. You'll see on the next slide, we're actually above. But we talk about ease of walking, the cleanliness. And when we switch over on the national comparison, we are above in the opportunities for employment, similar in the southern region. Everything else falls right in line again. Let's see here. I think this might be our next-to-last one. Few more community characteristics. Availability of paths and walking trails in Bowling Green, traffic flow. Again, I think traffic is known to rank pretty low. We got 37 percent rated as excellent or good for the traffic flow. Education and sense of community are in the 60s, and variety of housing options at 59 percent. And then you'll see, like I said, we're on par with all the national comparisons and the southern regions. And then the last part of the survey we'll talk about is the community and personal safety. Safety in your neighborhood during the day, 93 percent feel that it's excellent or good. And Bowling Green's downtown during the day, 91 percent. In years past, they kind of followed this question up with the same thing about how safe you feel at nighttime, but they saw that the results were pretty much exactly the same for each community, so they don't ask that. It went down, obviously, a significant amount for how safe people feel during the day versus at night. And again, we're not far above anyone, we're not far below anybody, we're just kind of right in line with everyone for this. So, some of the areas for improvement, like I said, there weren't a lot that were far above or far below, but we ranked slightly below in overall customer service, street repair, garbage collection, and bus or transit services. Obviously, we have more control over some of these than we do others. Areas we're excelling, vibrant downtown and commercial area, employment opportunities, shopping opportunities, economic development. And so, basically, in summary, what we're looking at is, we didn't see any significant declines or improvements in our numbers specifically. And on top of that, I don't know whether other communities did see significant raises, you know, in their numbers or lowering in their numbers, but we became much more similar. Like I said, last year, we had quite a few more where we were either higher or lower. We even had some where we were significantly higher or significantly lower. So, whether we've leveled out or other communities have. But Bowling Green's community characteristics and governance were strong across all facets, but participation in natural environment and built environment lagged somewhat. So, basically, you know, the survey in and of itself, that's a small snippet from it. It's significantly larger than that. There's a lot more questions. The entire survey is online at BGKY.org. I'm more than happy to take questions from you all or anyone else at any time, and I can be reached by phone or email. And I don't know if I made the time limit, Bruce?
You did.
Yes.
Ten minutes and six seconds.
I told you I could do it.
Yes, sir.
Kim?
Yes.
Going back to the education question, how was it broken down? And the reason I ask that, the city of Bowling Green, or city government, we have no responsibility for the day-to-day educational system.
Correct.
People associate Bowling Green Independent School District with the city of Bowling Green, two separate entities altogether.
There's a significant number of questions. That's what I said. We have questions that don't necessarily pertain to us, but it tries to give us an overall community view. The question is, please rate each of the following characteristics as they relate to Bowling Green as a whole. So, what people are doing is they're looking at, I'll read you some of them, just so you can get an idea. Availability of affordable childcare, K-12 education, adult educational opportunities, shopping opportunities, opportunities to participate in religious or spiritual events. So, these questions are not, this grouping of questions that includes that K to 12, isn't specifically related to services that we provide as a city government. It's how they view services within our community as a whole. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I think this, as we did in the past, I think this has value, not only for us as a government organization, but also Vicky Fitch and tourism to use as a marketing, and certainly for our friends at the Chamber to show that we are a community that makes job creation important value and is supported by the community. So, we'll definitely be giving these results to both those organizations. Anybody else you suggest we give them to?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was interesting that bus or transit services was listed as below average. And it goes right along with the United Way of Southern Kentucky's research and what they're going to be dealing with, coming out with pretty soon, when they talk with 55 groups and maybe 7,000 surveys that went out. But transportation being a significant issue, not adequate for our community, although I think the bus system does well with what they have. But I'm pleased that we had, as a commission, had put in $80,000 to try to beef up at least some parts of that transportation system, because, again, it is a terrific problem, the lack of adequate public transportation in our community. So, I'm glad this bore that out as well.
It helps us, I think, in our budgeting process, because you can see that we always put money where roads are, and we put money where sidewalks are in stormwater. So, it's good that where we put our money is perceived as being important by the citizens.
On these items where we did score low, I'd say 80 percent or less, if we didn't score 80, if we are less than 80 percent, during our retreat time, what can we do in the upcoming year to increase these numbers? And it may be we're doing it already, but the citizens don't realize it. So, maybe we need to market our city a little better. But there's a big difference between our police department and our fire department. Why is that?
I think, again, that's pretty normal across the board. I think when these surveys go out, from talking with the NRC, it's very, very common that your fire department is going to be ranked above your police department. I think it's very rare for it to be the other way around, or for them to even be, you know, close in rankings. I think, and that's why you saw, they were both similar on the national average, because that's generally how it goes, is the fire department is going to get your higher ranking, and your police department isn't necessarily going to get a bad ranking, but it's probably not going to be quite as high as fire.
Probably has to do a lot with the insurance survey pertaining to fire departments too, doesn't it?
I think it goes more to human nature. Firemen do not cite you, nor do they put you in jail, nor do they give you a ticket.
They're coming to save the day.
Yeah, firemen, it's the best job in terms of being right there to deliver something that is definitely wanted by people.
That's very much what I've been told from the surveyors, is that's typical, yes, for that reason.
It's always, cops are always lower than firemen.
One thing I noticed, and I agree with Melinda on it, is maybe we need to beef up our marketing in some of these areas, because, you know, the part about ranking us low for walking trails and accidents, I mean, we've got a great facility with the greenways.
Yeah.
And that's a great trail for walking and biking, and maybe not enough people know about it.
From a personal perspective, I'm always amazed by the answers about the maintenance of our streets. This is only my perspective. The streets in Bowling Green are the best streets I've seen anywhere in my career. And we're at a loss, Jeff and I and the department. We put more money in, we have all these programs. It's just, maybe it's perception, and maybe it's marketing. We need to maybe do a better job of our success. We've made it a priority. We do more paving, patching, potholes, and, you know, new roads than ever.
Well, many times, Kevin, it's probably what they're familiar with.
Yes.
And if you have citizens that are only familiar with what they have in Bowling Green, they really don't have a basis of comparison with, you know, how it might be in another community.
Yeah, it's, I guess that's a good problem to have.
And if you take the same route to work every day, and you hit the same potholes, you don't like the streets.
There's something to say for that, too, yeah.
Yeah, and here's an example. We worked on it a little this year, but code enforcement. So, what can we do? Does this mean code enforcement needs to be stronger? I don't know, but I think we need to address. And we tried it this year with the citizens' input and rewriting some of those.
The macro answer is, we're never done. We're always in the process of evolution and improvement. The smaller answer is, there is some inherent bias in some of these results. Cops versus firemen. Code enforcement will never rate higher than firemen, ever. It doesn't mean we don't stop improving, and we're working on it constantly to do it.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Lancaster, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is the quarterly report for the African-American Museum, and I believe Dr. John Long is here with us.
Where's the picture?
Wait a minute, what's that?
Oh, oh my God!
Where'd it come from?
Oh, that guy's an All-American. He's pretty skinny, isn't he?
Yeah, I know him.
Joe, that's you, but what year was that?
Probably '62.
'62. Where were you in '62? You're on the basketball court, right?
He's obviously grown since then.
I did that, too, Joe.
A two-handed set shot, right? Two-handed bounce pass?
Well, you have to remember, Naismith had just invented basketball a couple years before that, you know. But that is a good-looking picture.
You know what's amazing? I took that picture from my cellphone when I was down the gym working out. That's how good cell phones are today.
And that picture is hanging on the walls down at the, as you go into the Moxley Center, in case anyone wants to go down and look at it.
And have your picture made beside it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry we got distracted there just a bit. Dr. Long, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, Doctor, thank you. That's what an All-American looks like.
Honorable mayor, honorable councilman, honorable Mr. DeFebo, the city manager, thank you very much for having me this afternoon. Appreciate it. And I've been asked to talk for a few minutes, and I'll try to be brief, about our relocation. So, primarily, at least at first, it was an economic decision, because we received word that were we to continue at the location we had been on 301 State Street, and we're not going to enter into a contract to buy the building, our rent would double. So, we decided, that's not very good. Then, by a variety of ways, we had received word from Western Kentucky University that they might be interested in hosting us in one of the buildings on the campus. And over a period of time, in following up on that, we decided that it would be in our best interest to take that offer, and we did. So, our new location is now what is known as the Erskine House, the home of Dr. Erskine, who was a physician here in town. It was his residence, and he donated it and the lot on which it sits to the university, and it was used for a university operation, a program called the Center for Excellence in Teaching. And for whatever reasons, that program closed down recently, and the building became available. And so, it was offered to us, and we very happily accepted it. And again, on the economic grounds, it's to be leased to us for a dollar a year. That beats having the rent doubled, so.
Good use of resources there.
Yes, and that's the other reason, because that puts us in direct, in very immediate contact with the human resources, as well as the material resources of the university. Now, we are still an independent entity. The university is our landlord, we are its tenant. So, we don't own that property, nor the university does. But the university does not own the museum. We are still an independent entity. We are the African-American Museum Bowling Green Area Incorporated. Now, strategically also, that piece of property happens to be basically on the outskirts of the historic African-American community known as Jonesville. And so, whereas we were in Shake Rag, we could focus on the community there, now we can also focus on the community where Western's athletic fields now sit, the community of Jonesville. And you still have people alive who can tell you where their home was. And there are people who actually work at Western who can also tell you where their home was, where those athletic fields now sit. And the story about that is not very pretty, but it's a reality, and we plan to talk about that and to help to make that a place for the study of that community and all that goes with it. That is to say, this would be a wonderful place to do research. One of the goals that we have for our museum is to be a center for research on our region of Kentucky. So, we're not just showing things in exhibits, we're also providing information and helping researchers get at it. We all know that in this region, heritage is an important thing. Well, as it turns out, African-Americans are also interested in their heritage, and one of the things we want to do is to promote the study of the heritages of the people in this community and make the place available for them to do that. And I think we'll find a fine return on that investment. We were also asked in a communication from Mr. DeFebo about the costs that would be, they're called sunken costs?
Sunken costs.
Sunken costs, the irrecoverable monies that were expended during the time we were at 301 State Street. And so, from the fiscal year, from October 2011 through to December 2014, and I have copies, I think, sufficient for everyone. From October of 2011 through to this present date, December 2014, the total costs that are not recoverable is $23,545.59. So, we lived for three years or better at that location, and this was the amount that we ended up spending at that location. Those costs will go down, one thing, for rent. Naturally, we do have insurance that we have to pay in a new location, please excuse me, and certain other things we will have to take care of, utilities, to be sure. But I think we can manage those, given that we have a rather reasonable rent to pay. So, we've been very careful with the money that the city has allotted to us. We have not spent a dime beyond what we needed to spend, because we wanted to get the most possible out of that money. And we do appreciate the money that was granted to us, and we intend to be, continue to be, good stewards of those funds. Does anyone have any questions they want to ask? Please.
So, how much of that money do you have left?
Subtract, well, $100,000.
Okay, so this is all that's been spent, told?
That is it.
Okay.
We thought that was important.
Sure.
It is, very important.
And from the classic point of view, this is really not sunk cost. It's actually a better story, because you didn't spend money on remodeling that stays there.
Correct.
So, this is a greater news. It's a better profile.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Doctor, do you have an idea for your ongoing revenue stream that you're going to need to be able to operate the museum?
Yes, we have an idea. Do you mean, let me ask the question. What are we going to use as a revenue stream, or what are we going to have as a revenue stream?
What is the revenue stream going to be?
Okay. Basically, it's going to have to be donations. We have visited other museums, we have talked to people, we have read. And one thing that is at least good is to accept donations. We'll have a place where people can donate. And we've learned this kind of wisdom from people's experience, that if you say the cost to get in here is $5, they'll give you $5. If you say, after their experience, whatever you'd like to donate, we will accept. We'll get $10, $15, $20. So, it may be better that way than charging a flat fee at the door, so to speak. So, we'll have to depend on donors. We'll also, donations of people coming in to visit us, but also other donations, people who believe in what we're trying to do. We will also be looking for what get to be called angel donors. I'll call these something like venture capitalists, because a venture capitalist is willing to put some money out, a high rate of money, a high amount of money out, to invest in something that is not yet fully proven. Of course, there's something to see, but it's not a fully developed product or idea. We're going to look for some persons who will be venture capitalists with us. And if we are able to encourage such people, or they're encouraged to donate to us, that will be another source. But in the meanwhile, we'll be working hard to get people to come in and see what we're doing, and to learn from us. Let me ask a question. Have all of you learned something you did not know from some of the reports I've submitted about the history of Bowling Green? Is there anyone who knew some of the things I talked about?
I knew some of it.
You knew some of it. Good for you. But most of the people, I will warrant, did not. And not only that, these are the very kinds of things that will help to sell this city. I don't typically think in economic terms, but this is one time I have to, because I realize that moral arguments have a certain amount of persuasion, but the economic arguments always have a persuasion. And these are the kinds of things that people want to know about. These are the kinds of things that are generally speaking unknown. Some of the things that I've talked about have lain buried in documents for 140 to 150 years. These things are the things that people want to know. We just learned in the past week of a group, if I can get the name correct, it's the African-American Recreational Vehicle Association, I believe that's its proper title, will be coming to Bowling Green in June of 2015. And we were approached by a university colleague to participate in that, if we would be willing to. And we're going to take that up at a meeting this evening, as a matter of fact. At any rate, here's an opportunity to be recognized by a national organization for what we're doing here in Bowling Green, and we can give them an awful lot. And we plan to do that. If everything works out well, we will indeed do that. And I'll say that the word will spread. A lot of times, word of mouth is more powerful than a lot of other things. Word of mouth, social media will help to spread the word of the African-American Museum in Bowling Green, and we've got something to show them and to tell them.
Do you plan to be working with Vicky Fitch at the tourism?
Most certainly do, yes. Most certainly do, yes.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Long, down the road a little piece, a few years.
I'm sorry?
Down the road, if the museum felt a need, based on the experience at that time, to expand, and make the facility larger, would Western be supportive and renew your lease to accommodate that expansion if you needed it?
That's a question we would have to ask, if the time ever would come. Our lease is also written in such a way that either party can terminate the lease with sufficient notice, and there are no penalties to that. So we are, we're in a situation where if we find another situation, or a better situation, or whatever the need requires, if we find something that is to our liking and fitting, and fitting to us, then we can terminate our lease with the university and move to the next location. But I can't at this moment answer the question you posed.
Of course, I guess one of the things we would want to look at is permanency somewhere.
Certainly.
Having a home that is there, and is going to be there a while. And that's the reason I was asking about possible expansions, and whether or not Western would renew the lease. But we'll worry about that when we get there.
So, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Long? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you again for having me, I appreciate it very much.
I know since you brought a couple of your board members with you, Kathy Gumm is here, and Dr. Lauren Foster is there in the back too. Thank you all for coming and your participation.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is our 2015 Sidewalk Project Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. City Commission knows, and we're very proud to say that our top three public service priorities are sidewalks, roads, and stormwater. We're here tonight to get your continuing support in doing the upcoming sidewalk program. Kyle Hunt will be your presenter, and we have taken and changed the process to first have a larger macro community vetting of what we want to do, bring those comments back to you, have more of a micro vetting here and approval, and move forward on design and survey. I think Kyle's going to go over the various streets. Kyle? Kyle? Kyle?
Mr. Hunt, come up. Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Try to be also as brief as possible, but we do appreciate the opportunity to present the candidate locations for the FY15 Sidewalk Program. Whoa. What we'll, what I like to do is what we usually do in previous years, is just give a brief update on the program itself, and then talk about the individual projects specifically. The sidewalk program was approved by the City Commission in August of 2007, with the purpose of improving pedestrian access throughout the city. Since that time, Public Works has been involved with the construction and/or pending construction of just over ten and a half miles of sidewalk within the city limits. The budget for this year is $650,000. And as Mr. DeFebbe alluded to, we do have a more robust public involvement section to the program that we'll detail momentarily. And we have been doing that since November of last year. What helps us to decide which locations to build at in a given year is what we call criteria-based selection. That's where we have five criteria that we help, that helps us to establish an order of construction, and helps us, helps us to give a more structured approach in picking locations. This year's and years past, locations with existing sidewalks along one side of the street weren't considered, and then also, we are also, we're also recommending construction along one side of the street as well, for, for new projects. Here are the five criteria that we look at. We look at connectivity, we call this our gap score. We look to see if the location closes a gap within the existing sidewalk network, and based on the length of that gap, helps to determine what that score is. We look at location or proximity, and that's proximity to pedestrian generators such as schools, parks, bus stops. The closer a location is, the higher its score. We have a financial component, if a project is receiving money from an outside source other than city funds, it receives a score for that. We look at technical feasibility, which is our ease of construction, you could call it. When we look at this score, we look at conflicts such as with utilities, drainage impacts, physical obstructions such as fences, trees, landscaping, things of that nature. And then we also have a walkability score, which is based on the functional classification of the street or the roadway. So a street with a higher speed, higher level of volume, traffic volume, would receive a higher score than, say, a local residential street with lower speeds, lower traffic volumes. And then, in the event of any ties, estimated project costs will be the tiebreaker. As I said before, we have incorporated a more robust neighborhood involvement aspect of the program. And we've done this in order to quantify the level of support of a project early on in the process, rather than going through survey and design and finding out that particular location, the residents aren't interested in the sidewalk. And we do this through several phases. The first we have is a preliminary notification to the residents along the street, and what we like to do is notify, regardless of the side of the street that the sidewalk is on, we notify residents along both sides, since those would be the primary users of the facility. We give them a letter that states your location has been selected, and also provide a comment card where they can note their opposition or support of the project, and any concerns with the project they may have. And then we invite them to what we call a pre-designed open house, this is the first of two open houses. This is where they can come see basically a line on paper. It shows them on what side of the street the sidewalk is proposed, and the from and to locations, and there we talk about the sidewalk width, and we may, at that point, we try to get into specifics with property owners, what they have concerns with, that way we can avoid any, any potential conflicts. The next step in the process would be what we're doing this afternoon, is presenting the, the findings from the comment cards and the pre-designed open house to you at a work session, for you to see percentages of support and opposition to each specific project. And then once a project is, sorry, let me back up, we also have, at this time, an ongoing notice via the Projects Issues page on the city website, where residents can look at to see what stage each project is at. Once a particular location is approved for survey and design, we move forward with that, and once that's complete, we have what we call a post-design open house, where we invite the residents back out to see what the final, quote unquote, "final" design plans are for each location. And it's at this point that we can discuss the need to purchase any easements, and also any inconvenience payments for the removal of trees, shrubs, landscaping, fences, things of that nature. And it's also at this point, we may be able to make some minor tweaks to the design if And with the background information, here are the eight locations for the FY15 program. These locations, we feel reasonably confident we'll be able to construct based on the budget that we have, what we have seen in the past, or what, these are based on construction costs that we have seen in the past. Say for instance, bids come in higher than we anticipated, some of the projects at the bottom of the list may be moved to the following years, at the top of the following years' list. And this is just over, these eight projects are just over a mile and a half in total Some of the projects we're able to get on the same slides, so I'll try to talk about multiple projects when I can. The first two we have are Tim's Valley Way and Stonehenge. This is near the intersection with Veterans Memorial. There's a short section of Tim's Valley, no major conflicts, so this section, I believe, is at the top of the list for this year.
Let me ask you a question. The green is existing sidewalk?
Yes, yes.
This is a classic gap application, correct?
That's correct, sir. Yeah, on the following sides, slides, all of the green that you'll see are existing sidewalks, and the yellow are the locations that we propose for construction. That may not help some of you out, but do the best we can. Stonehenge, we'll pick up here, and again, continue to Veterans Memorial, tie into the Greenway that the, the state constructed along Veterans. And the only issue at this location would be, there's a fairly substantial rock outcropping here at the corner of Stonehenge and Veterans that we'll have to contend with.
Where's Morgantown Road, top of the map?
Yes, sir, it would be up here. The next project is East Main Avenue, and here is the recently renovated NCS Building at 707 East Main.
Brent's Place. Brent's Place.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And what we would propose to do would be to tie in at either end of this property, tie into the sidewalk that was built as part of the renovation project. Again, that's a logical need to fill a gap. The next two locations we have are East 14th Avenue and Kenton Street. These are some of the longer sections for this year's project, but East 14th runs from Park to the bypass, and Kenton Street runs from East 13th to Cabell Drive.
One side only, right?
Yes, all of these are proposed one side only. Next we have Warren Way. The main creation of this project is, of course, the new Dishman and Guinness Elementary, just offsite here at Durbin and Glen Lilly. And then also, we have the College View Sidewalk Project, which is currently under construction. So this created a gap between those two locations. Next we have Cypresswood Lane, and of course, this being created from the Greenwood High School being right here. And it would go from Scottsville Road to the end of City Maintenance or City Rideaway, I believe the last one we have is Hogel Drive, from Park Street to the bypass. Once Ogden Way sidewalk was completed, this, of course, created a gap between Ogden and the bypass, and it created the need for sidewalk along Hogel. Any questions at this point?
Do you mind going back to the new neighborhood building? Are you anticipating a lot of citizens walking to that building?
I'll answer that.
Okay.
Staff too.
Most qualified?
Yes.
During the transit realignment, they moved the transit stop on 10th Street up the hill, because what was happening is they, the transit was coming down the hill and stopping on the side of the hill, then they were creating a hazard because of cars coming over the hill, and then coming into it. So now the transit stop is up here. And you have to keep in mind the services that are provided in this building, some of those are low-income services, and that's transit-dependent population.
Good, thank you. That answer, because at first I'm looking, there are not that many houses around there.
I understand.
So, thank you.
That's, that's the biggest justification.
But you wouldn't be unusual to have somebody living on 5th Street to walk to your place now, from downtown?
No, we walk. I don't. I have some staff that walk back and forth. So there is more traffic up there than what you think.
I heard you were a runner, though.
Yeah, thank you for that. Recreationally, what I've noticed is there is a lot of daytime walking from the medical center employees, lunch break walking, that type of thing. Thank you, Gavin.
Thanks for coming up, Brent. Appreciate that.
Any other questions at this point?
Big Brent.
Okay. Now I'd like to bring up Karen Foley with NCS to talk more in depth about the public involvement portion of the program.
Ms. Foley.
And I'm hoping this is a right goes forward and left goes back on the remote. If not, I'll just try the other buttons. At the onset, as Kyle mentioned, the property owners for each of the projects do receive a letter from us. It's a fairly extensive letter, it's a couple pages, it includes sort of what to expect related to the project, it has a little bit of information on there related to the personal property reimbursement, if that's something that is an issue, and it has instructions about how they can provide feedback back to us related to the project. And one of the things that's important to note is in the letter, it does mention that if they do not submit a comment card back to us, then we presume that they are consenting to the project. And the reason why we take that approach is because we know that the City Commission for a number of years has made it a priority to build sidewalks in our community, and so we take the position in the affirmative, that unless you tell us no through a comment card, we're going to assume that, that you have consent for the project. So they get the letter that comes to them, and included in that is what we call a comment response card. Each of these response cards are basically coded with a number, we know if we have duplicate property owners in each project batch. Each property owner is basically entitled to one response, regardless of the number of properties that they may own in a particular project area. And we collect those back. We do this at the same time that we are scheduling an open house. So they get their letter, enclosed in the letter is a comment card, enclosed in the letter is a self-addressed stamped envelope, so we can make it as easy as possible for people to return those back to us. They do get notice about the open house, they have Kyle's contact information, so if they can't make the open house, and they have questions or comments, they know how to get in touch with us. So this is a major component up front, so people are aware what's being proposed. This is actually a photo from a project open house from a prior year. This year, we had our open house, all at the same time for all projects, in our new NCS Building. So that was one of the first events we had in the building there. We only had six property owners who attended that open house, however, those six property owners represented more than 20 different properties. So in this particular batch of project, this particular batch, we had a lot of property owners who are landlords, and so some of them had multiple properties that they were representing when they came out. One of the things we also do, and Kyle mentioned this also, we have something called our Projects and Issues page. This actually comes from the BG Can website, but it's tied into the city's website. If you go to the Neighborhood section of the website, you can find this page, and it's oriented by map. So you just have to know where you live on the map, you can click on that, and it will show you what the list of different projects and issues. They're not all sidewalk projects, there may be other projects on there, but this is something that I can update to let people know, okay, this particular project is in this phase, this project is pending, this project is ongoing. For example, with College View, you can see that College View is ongoing, or if a project has been completed, they can kind of see where that is. And also, on one of the columns there, you'll see there's a worker that's assigned. This is a really easy way, they can click on that, and that email, that will generate an email to Kyle related to that project. So that's an ongoing way of communicating people. Some of the things that we heard back regarding the different projects, and I'll tell you that every time we do this, there are some things that we expect to hear from people. Obviously, we expect to hear some site-specific issues that people may have regarding the layout on their particular property, whether it's a parking issue, or maybe they have a retaining wall, or they have a tree, we expect to hear those sorts of things. And so we record those comments as they come in. We also expect that we may hear some generalized comments about the program itself, well, I don't understand why, you know, no one walks here. We do expect we may hear some of those comments. This particular go-around, we really had very few property-specific concerns that we heard from folks. But for those particular property owners, I'm sure they do feel those impacts, and basically what Kyle tries to do is accommodate what we can related into designs. And of course, we know that there will be some things that we just simply can't accommodate. But there were some property-specific things regarding impacts to parking, the aesthetics of the project, what this is, what is this going to look like when it's under construction, that sort of thing. And these are basically some of the response rates, and I was pleased to hear Kim mentioning what the typical response rates were for mail-in type surveys. I was like, oh yay, she's covering that information. Keep in mind, we send one letter with one comment card with one self-addressed stamped envelope. So we're not really sending repeated attempts to get people to complete a comment card and send it back. So that's a little bit different. On the Tim's Valley project, which you may have noticed on the map, it's Tim's Valley on one side of Veterans Memorial, it's Stonehenge on the other side, but we treated those as two separate projects. We had a 17% response rate. This means 17% of the property owners actually sent a comment card back, or they completed a comment card at our open house. And so that's what the response is on the left, and it looks like a whole pie. And that's because we had no one who gave us any indication of opposition. And that's because we had no one who gave us any indication of opposition to the particular project. On the right, that includes the assumed consents for which we received no comment card back. No concerns or impacts mentioned on that project. On East Main, we have a response rate here of 25%. In this particular project, there are very few property owners who are impacted. It's largely us. The Medical Center, of course, has the free clinic right next to us. We're not directly impacting their property with the project. And then, of course, across the street, BGMU owns some property, so they have all been advised of the project, and we basically recorded our own response here on behalf of the city. One thing that we did note, BGMU is preparing to do a waterline replacement project along East Main, and so, of course, we'll make sure that we coordinate with them. We don't think that will impact the sidewalk construction itself going forward. Stonehenge, we got a much better response rate on the other side of Veterans Memorial, a 56% response rate. Again, we have 100% project support, both on the responses we received, and then when you factor in the assumed consent. No concerns or impacts, other than what Kyle mentioned regarding the rock outcropping. On Fourteenth Avenue, we had a response rate of 25%. We did have some folks who did not consent to the project. That's about 4% of the total, including assumed consent. And again, a specific concern related to a specific location, potential loss of some parking spaces at Fourteenth and Indianola. On Kenton Street, which is actually intersects with Fourteenth, we have two projects intersecting with one another. A 36% response rate on this, a 9% not support out of the responses we received. That breaks down to a 3% non-support when you factor in the assumed consent. And again, these are mostly related to very specific property locations. One possible concern was the loss of a rock wall and some landscaping, and, okay, what does that do to my property if this goes through? One of the things that I should note regarding the Kenton Street, and as we go through here, I'm basically listing all of the things that people had to complain about, but we do receive comments back from people saying, "Thank you very much for considering an investment back in this neighborhood." And the Kenton Street project is one of those where we did receive comments back from property owners saying, "Yes, we're encouraged by this. You know, maybe we could have a neighborhood cleanup," where people are actually, they're taking it to the next level, simply because the city is considering making this investment in the neighborhood. So even though I didn't itemize that on here, I didn't want to pass that along, because we do receive those comments on the comment cards.
There's been housing improvements over there as well, some new constructions remodeling, so it's doing better.
On Warren Way, we received a 41% response rate. With the, including the assumed consent, we only had 7% who were not supportive of the project. And again, I think that can be related to a site-specific area where the sidewalk is planned to go. In this particular section, the roadway makes a curve. The driveways that are there in the curve are very short, and the folks who are in that curve rely a lot on some on-street parking, because they don't really have adequate parking in the driveway. So this is one of those, and I think we had a couple of the folks to which this applies, who came to the open house, and they did say, "Hey, ordinarily, we would be very supportive of sidewalks. Yes, we know that it's needed. It's just for us right now, it puts us in a bind, because we don't really have any other place to park."
So from a staff point of view, is that a trump?
Is that a trump? I don't know.
That's something we work through and try to find a solution to, to make it doable. Maybe somebody can respond, because eventually, they'll deal with it, right?
That's typically how we handle situations like that. If issue is presented like that, we usually work with them either before the project, at the post-design open house, or while the project is under construction. But we try to make every attempt we can to work with with property owners in situations like that.
We have a similar situation on Catherine Street. I was out there a month or so ago. The city engineer was out there with me pertaining to that. What do you mean that we try to work with them? It's either we take their spaces away, or we leave them as is, I guess. Is that correct?
What we can do sometimes is bump behind the parking spaces. What that would lead to is getting on their property, in which case, we would need to purchase an easement from them to gain access to the property. But if they weren't in support of that, then, yes, we would have to take a parking space.
Some other ways that we've worked around that, in some cases, we make it widen the drive entrance so more people could get in a drive, if there is a drive. Another consideration is their on-street parking or not. And so, in general, we're trying to put a straight sidewalk. Occasionally, we'll curve around some things to fit stuff in, but a lot of this is just trying to find the best fit for the problem that exists when we get to those specific concerns like that.
If a person has two vehicles, husband and wife, in this particular example, and they've been parking on the street, and they lose both of their spaces, what do they do?
We're going to try to look, and let's just assume there's a drive, you know, there's, we're going to do the best we can to get their two parking spaces back. And like I said, on occasions, we've widened accesses into drives so people can have better access, more parking along the edge. One thing that's, we pay a lot of attention to is on-street parking allowed, if that is the case. We may move them from in the yard out to the street, but.
Would it be fair to say that the very problem we're talking about is endemic to the whole process in every neighborhood? We always have some streets, some neighborhoods, some parking issue everywhere.
There's always, yes. Each of these projects, we're working with numerous property owners. And we can, we get creative as best we can. At the end of the day, the goal of having a more walkable community is our driver. So we work very closely with a lot of people, and we're going to do the best we can to make sure they they can still park the vehicles they need to.
Corollary to this, it's rarely do you get 100% of every neighborhood saying yes.
Yes.
Because if that was the case, the bar would be set so high, we would never do sidewalks.
Jeff, let me publicly thank you for taking care of the issue around Weston with that one driveway. Did an excellent job of redoing that, and everybody just tickled to death, so.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for responding to that.
Thank you.
Cypresswood Lane, and of course, this says neighborhood input. Really, this is property owner input. There's not really, there's not any residents there, but the response rate on this was 67%. We were able to make contact with everybody except for one of the property owners, either by email or with a phone call. And that one property owner did get, as far as we know, they got the letter, they got the comment card, but we did not receive word back from them. But with the assumed consent, there's 100% support. No concerns and impacts related to that project. Lastly, on Hogel, we received a response rate of 42% on this one. 75% support through the responses that we received, and when you factor in the assumed consent, we have 89%. This project, if you're going to pick one of all eight, probably had more opposition to it, as you can see. Again, we had some property owners who were concerned about impact to yard and some of the disruption during construction specific to their location. I did receive a very well-written and eloquent written response from a woman who's lived in the neighborhood for 40-something years, who does not have a driver's license and walks everywhere she goes, and she was opposed to the project. I think in part because of a recent BGMU project, and she wasn't super happy with how that particular project went through. But she did raise the issue. Her concern was, how will these be maintained over time? Because as someone who does walk in the neighborhood, her concern are the things that sometimes come with sidewalks over time, which are trip hazards and those sorts of things. And she concluded her letter by saying that we have completed our public relations exercise, and that she understands, but I wanted to pass that along to you because it was particularly well-written. We did hear that comment back from her, from someone who does walk in the neighborhood. But aside from that, not a lot of opposition on that particular project. And I'm happy to answer questions, as I'm sure Kyle is.
Any other questions? I think Mr. Please.
If we could get kind of a status report on Covington, sidewalks on Covington?
We have completed the survey for that location, and we're getting ready to start design on it.
Okay.
So.
It won't be part of this year's program?
No, no, it's separate. Yes, that's correct. We've just been caught up with other projects, so that one's the next on the list.
Thank you.
I got confused. Are next on the list for next year, or?
No, no, next to start design, design and construction. Those are, these will follow Covington.
Okay.
And that's.
We're about a year behind on our project.
Right, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's by design.
Sir?
That's by design, though.
No, no problem.
These extra public relations things have added time, well-needed time, but there's also design factors. Thank you all.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much, Kyle.
Thank you all.
Appreciate the work. Last item is kind of a new item that presented itself this week on our ABC quota licenses.
Gene is going to him. You want to come to the dais?
If you want. You can either hook up here, be fine whichever.
Public can see you better.
Be all right.
We never get a chance to see you over here.
It's fine for me. I'm sure they'll agree it's better, but.
Michael Gosson has some pool around here. I see that right now.
That's WBKO.
Yeah. If Michael Gosson wants you at the podium, you're at the podium.
Michael Gosson.
From Mayville, Kentucky?
Mayville? What?
Mayfield.
Mayfield.
Okay.
West Kentucky, as far west as you can go.
That's like the little toenail that sticks down at the end?
You're in the Ohio River.
I don't think Bowling Green wants to talk about Graves County this year, do they?
What'd you say about purple's what?
I said, you don't want to talk about Graves County right now, do you, after the football season?
I just assumed not.
Hi, Mr.
Are we ready?
All right.
Go ahead. Good afternoon. One first, I've got David Lyon with me. Hopefully, we've got questions about, technical issues about ABC. He can answer those. He knows those a lot more than I do. In addition, here's the first person to receive a call from the state letting us know about these administrative changes. And what we're here today basically is to give you some information, educational information about recent changes that the state ABC did to the administrative regulations doing with quota systems here in Kentucky, at least here in Bowling Green. And I guess what gets us started is Warren County and Bowling Green, what we call a moist ABC area. We are a wet city in a dry county. Every place in Kentucky is not that, but that's kind of what led, I think, to the changes, what we were told. What we were told, I did check with the General Counsel for ABC once we found out about these. These were done last year, and we didn't know about them up until about a week ago. We got a call and said, "You may want to know about these changes," and they do impact the city. But what I was advised, I did talk to KLC, who didn't know about them as well, and also called the General Counsel for ABC and talked to him, and was told that about, since about 1983, when cities like Bowling Green came in and had elections where they went wet in dry counties, those cities were given specific quota requirements when they came in. And I'll throw out a city, say E-Town, for example, and that's just, I'm throwing out a city. When they came in, if they did this, they were told, you've got six package stores and eight quota retail licenses. They've given specific numbers. The cities like Bowling Green, I think Richmond was also impacted. We've been wet for so many years. We were here before 1983, so we were not provided a specific number. Instead, we were told that, and again, this impacts just package stores and retail, quota retail drinks. We'll discuss those a bit more in a minute. But we were told that our quotas for both those two quota programs was based on county population. So those are the numbers that we used. Both administrative regulations were amended now to clarify that the city's quota, instead of county population, is based on city population. And the numbers I gave you, for example, we thought the quota before this change, our previous package quota was 53. Our new quota now is 26. We have 25 current active package stores, leaving us one package store available license now. For drink licenses, our previous quota was 49. The new quota is 24. We have 37. So we're 13 over, so we have none of these licenses available. And not to scare these people to have these licenses, because they can keep them. Their grandfather then, the issue is, we can't issue anymore, because the state won't issue anymore. And again, to make sure if I understand, this does not impact restaurants, because there is a non-quota restaurant license that restaurants can have. They have to seat 50 people and derive at least 50% of their income from selling food. If they do that, they qualify for a restaurant license, and they can get that. Also, it does not impact beer sales. ABC has always treated beer differently than other liquors, so that does not impact beer sales at all either. So we'll make sure that's, everybody knows about that issue. And I guess that's, I'm not sure I want to say a whole lot more. That's kind of just mainly just to let you know what's going on. There is procedures and regulations that the city can go to state ABC and ask to increase that. But it's an application. We have to set out, basically give them a reason why you think you need an increase. And I don't encourage Warren County to go wet, but if the county was wet, then our quota numbers would go back to what we had before. But again, again, you know, there's not, I've heard no interest from Warren County in doing that. But again, the, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them, but.
Is this request to increase the quota, is that proactive or based on a request that we receive from a particular company?
We have requested. The administrative regulation sets out detailed information you have to provide. We have to request it. They will say yes or no. If they say no, we have the ability to request a hearing before them.
What I mean was, can we write them and say, "Based on the last history, we're going to need five more of these. Please give us all five now."
We can ask for it.
Okay.
This, the application says, the population city, total retail sales of city for most recent year, retail sales per capita, total retail sales in city for most recent fiscal year, tourism destinations applicable, and other economic and commercial data offered to show the city's capacity to support additional licenses. And this is discretionary with the state. The state does not, if we ask for more, that's discretionary of them, whether they will grant us more or not, because that would be up to them. If they do do that, the reg says that we cannot exceed, I think it's more than one for 1,500 people. And I didn't give that number, but for quota retail drink licenses, the number is one for 2,500 persons. For the retail package license, it's one for 2,300 persons in the city.
Did you do the calculations under the maximum limit if we applied for something different?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Did you do a new calculation on how many licenses would be available if we had applied for the 1,500?
That would get us, I have not add those up. That gives obviously more than these. I'm not sure if that would get us back up to where we were before or not, though. I haven't done that calculation, see what that would give us, if that's your answer, but.
Did you, Dave?
I think it would take it up to 43. Only, probably had 49 on the quota drink, and then it came up to 43.
On the package stores, is it just do the quota retail drink licenses, or does it do the package stores too?
I think it was 46 on the package and 43 on the drink. Doesn't quite get us up to where we were, but it does open some.
Gene, per our conference, some of the conversation we've had, that this potentially would, if I understood our conversation correctly, impact some hotels, possibly new hotels coming in, or new grocery stores?
Well, one example, I guess, particularly a big grocery store. We have one package license left. So if a big grocery store wanted to come into town, and we were out of them, and they wanted to also have a package store, we would have no more to issue. We have one left right now. Of course, what I was told is, is that, and I think the mayor kind of made a comment in his comments to the paper as well, these make these licenses, or could make these licenses fairly valuable.
That's what I was going to ask.
Because of the 37, and I want to make sure that, I think initially I said, you know, the retail drink license was mainly bars. That's close, but we do have some restaurants that are, that are currently holding these licenses now, too. For example, I think it's what Red Lobster is holding one of these type of licenses. The facilities next to the ball stadium may be holding them as well, too. The last place. stadium may be holding them as well, too. The last place in town that got one was T-Squares. And they got one because they could not meet the 50-seat requirement. So they could not get a restaurant license, so they had to get this retail drink license instead. They can have people in the 21 in there, because they get more than 50% of their income from food. But they had to get this license, because they couldn't meet the 50-seat requirement.
Let's take, and I think we talked about this, take it from Myers. Had they not been able to get a license, you know, my thought would be, would they have come here with, what, almost 300 jobs?
Well, I'd hate to...
But I don't know that.
Yeah, but put it this way. If Myers was considering Owensboro and Bowling Green, and the package store was a major issue for them, and they were considering between these two locations, and Owensboro's got package stores available, and we didn't, I mean, I would, I would guess, if that was the final question, issue they're looking at, that we may very well lose them, you know, someplace else. You know, this is a, I guess what concerned us most was the fact that we didn't know about it.
Did we find out why there was no notice given? I thought Kentucky administrative regulations required notice in a feedback period.
They may have done it. If so, we didn't pick it up. I don't think we did, nobody recalls getting any notice from state ABC about this was being considered. KLC didn't know about it until we notified about it. I think they missed it as well. Now, the only, like I said, our first word was a phone call a couple of weeks ago, saying, "You may want to know about this, these regulation changes."
Why did they call this time, if they changed it whenever?
Maybe David's speaker, they called him.
It was one of the licensing people with... One of the main licensing people with the state ABC called me and said, from what she said, the regulation was passed just this year, about the middle of, about August or July, but it was really not brought to their attention until November of this year. And so they were approving license past the quota we had, and they accepted the one to T-Squares, because it had already been submitted. They said they would approve that, even though that put us 13 over the quota, but said that would be the last one to be issued. And they would not, if any were submitted to them at this point, they would be denied and returned to the applicant.
Did I understand you to say that the organization that passed the regulation didn't tell the people who enforced the regulation?
That was what I was told.
Just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
I've got a question. We're talking about the licenses that currently exist. Those people are not to panic, they can keep them.
Yes, their grandfathered in.
Okay, but what happens if those places go out of business or cease to exist? Does that license disappear? Or is that a commodity that some would sell? What happens to that license?
Well, I think a couple of things. One, they can, they can just, once they close, they can get rid of it and shut it down. Then our numbers will go down. I think the statutes also provide, the regulations provide, they can keep it in dormancy, which basically means that we may close our store or our facility, but we want to keep the license. I'm not too sure, I should know, but I'm not too sure if there's a limit on how long they can do that. And my understanding is, too, I think they can also sell it.
Yes, sir.
Help me understand, like, how this public policy was developed. I can see outright prohibition, because by some, alcohol is considered a bad thing, so let's eliminate it. Is there science behind the quotas? Does it say that X amount of licenses is somehow better, or empirically proven to be acceptable across society? How do they come up with these numbers?
And how they did, I've never seen a formula. I think it's just up to the state ABC board. They have the ability to establish quotas for each community, and I think they've decided through the years that the population, you know, one per certain population, I think, you know, they have determined is the sufficient number.
Speaking from my experience of alcoholic beverage control back in the 80s, part of that was some neighborhoods were, seemed to be inundated with package stores, which tended to cause a decrease in the upkeep of that neighborhood. So they do allow communities to pass legislation or ordinances that keep them a certain distance, like we've got a thousand-yard distance between package stores, and so that one neighborhood is not overly served, I guess would be the best way to say it.
Yeah, if I recall right, and I think it is, I think the statutes actually set a quota for first-class cities, but then they give the ABC board the ability to establish the quotas for everybody else.
Is there any consensus among the board to seek a higher quota based on the population standard? Do you want to study it some more, or consider and talk to other people?
I personally would like to see them ask the state for more.
Anybody else have a comment?
Only that maybe our state legislators may need to get involved with helping us sort through this, too, and see if they can help in any way.
They've been made aware of our situation here?
I just don't want to see us get into some kind of battle with these licenses that are out there now, and people thinking that they've got a goldmine. And I can see all kinds of potential bad things from that. We have to be very careful.
That just invites corruption, because you then become marketing of a state asset by private entity, and that's, I remember that back in the day. So are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. And I think it'd be a good move, especially economically for the city of Bowling Green, that we do that.
I was just asking whether we needed professional help to put together an application request, or whether we did that ourselves.
Is that something you look into for us, and maybe come back?
But I gather, from what you're saying, first, the first step you want is actually go through the state and ask to increase our...
I have spoken to the state legislators and asked them to help us look into it, but we'll take a parallel path at the same time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any policy initiatives from the board commissioners, I think it was yesterday?
We have one issue, or one situation, and it has to do with notifications. I think it's interesting what, as a staff, we've done with propping up, firming up the way we deal with sidewalks, notification, all that, which seems to be a very, very good system. Through this, through the issues involved with the batting facility at Cary Octus, there were a number of comments made about not knowing about what was on our agendas, not knowing, being aware of what was in front of us. And one lady, I think, I think this may have some merit, I don't know, but I think it may have some merit, of potentially using social media in the same way that we do for golf courses now, which is a great program, notifications, maybe people signing up. And I know that it's on BGKY.org, but I'm still not quite sure that we don't need to do a little bit more in the notification of some agenda items that we have. And the rub comes in, I think, in some ways, as to some agenda items. So I'm thinking that I'd like to see maybe staff look at the option of using some social media in terms of if people want to know what our agenda is, is to get a notification that the agenda's available.
I think we have that already.
And in what way? How's it used?
We currently send out an e-news for anyone who has signed up to receive those. We post it on our website as well. And then it also, I believe, is being posted on Facebook. If it's not, I'll follow up with Kim.
So what they would have to do then is sign up for the e-news. Can we, can we public sign, and I know that, and we've had that for a good little while now, but there's something still missing when we have a significant issue, and people, and again, I know there's all naysayers and say, "Well, everybody's got a chance to see," but I'd still like to look and see if we can do a little bit more, maybe advertising that a little bit more. I don't know. I'm just saying that I would like to see something done.
We can put a push out on Twitter to just kind of remind people, if you're interested in signing up for e-news. Obviously, there's more than just the agenda notification to get, but there's also neighborhood notifications that you could receive, or special notifications about anything going on, so they could certainly sign up for that as well. We can announce another item on Facebook, and we can also do an article on our blog. Hopefully, we can get the daily news, maybe to also put something out, and/or BKO, to make an announcement that these services are available.
And this has happened, I've been doing this almost four years now, but I mean, it comes up when we have some issues, and just that the batting facility is the most recent, only reason I use that.
If I can follow up on what he said there, I think we did kind of let the Mount Air, what's the name that...
Mount Air Square.
Square, the condominiums over there. We, I think we probably let them down and not sending them a card, or doing something like planning and zoning, you know, baseball facility gonna be built on this spot, you know, something along that line. We could probably do a little better. I'm sorry, Joe.
No, that's okay. I was getting ready to make the same comment pertaining to planning and zoning. Why don't we just make up, I have a policy that if we have any changes on city property or city parks, that we automatically notify the adjoining property owners.
I think that's a great idea.
That is a great idea. And Bruce is exactly right about the Mount Air group, and that's what really prompted me to move this forward a little bit now.
Consider it done. We'll do that process. Thank you. Any other comments? That's the end of our work session. We'll return at 7 o'clock for our regular session. Invite you to tune in.